Seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. Happy New Year to everybody. Nice to meet you. Last time, so Happy New Year. All right, so we're gonna get right into some discussions. The first one, we have on the agenda is the town and village communication discussion. So I think this, how do I correct me if I'm wrong in belief, Darrell? This came up in conversation between Darrell and I and Tom and some others around meetings that occur with a town or village or with, you know, anything we're doing from sewer to talking about dog permits, whatever it is. If we can't make a meeting, Darrell can't make a meeting, then we can send representatives from the village or town that makes sense to be there. So Jake, Heather, those type of people that need to be at those meetings, who can go there, gather information, and bring it back to the team. I mean, that's typical with most elected officials. They forget someone goes in the place that they can't be. So we're just gonna talk about if everyone wasn't agreeing with that process. So I think it makes more sense, especially when it comes to the sewer stuff and things like that. Jake is the one that's there.
That's the way I would choose.
All right. So Darrell, did I have that right?
Can you turn back? We can't hear anything. Can't you turn up the volume on the laptop itself?
No.
Oops, not you, Darrell.
There you go. Darrell, how's that? Can you talk?
Yep.
There, is that better? All right. All right, sorry we couldn't hear you.
Yeah, we're talking about number one, the monthly meeting.
Well, actually Jerry was talking about number-
I think that either myself or representative would attend. The scheduling of those monthly meetings would try to be something that would be consistent. But if there wasn't something that we necessarily needed to talk about, we would not necessarily- Can you talk to-
So yeah, that was another piece. You know, we talked about how do we improve communications between each other. I think it was me that suggested in the rule of life that the mayor and the supervisor meet every month and we could not say we're not talking to each other. You guys meet on a monthly or quarterly basis.
Yeah, I think what Darrell's referring to is there's an email that Supervisor Flaherty sent out. December sixth. And then he sent it again on December twentieth and in red, wanting to know what the village's responses were. Since there is no packet for this meeting, you guys probably don't have the email. But Darrell's got it.
You had it originally.
But, well, the email was sent to, well-
No, but Darrell printed that and gave it to them at prior meetings.
Yeah.
I did send this out to everybody.
Nice one.
All right. So number one was the monthly meeting. So who's gonna respond? Who's gonna respond to the supervisor?
I thought we did this in person already.
We did.
No.
Yes, we were in a meeting that I don't think you were a part of. And we agreed to this.
And then he asked again, and then he sent out another email. And then Darrell said, well-
I don't think this board has taken votes as to what's gonna happen.
We have to vote if Darrell meets with the town supervisor or supervisor.
Well, you should-
Well, we should all agree.
There should be, somebody, this should be memorialized somewhere. You should be taking-
But it's settled to us.
Okay, so that, you know, six months from now, a year from now, two years from now, there's something to go on.
And he also, they also talked about doing meetings with the whole board, the joint boards. That was also-
That's number, that's number two. All right, then there should be quarterly meetings of the village and the town. All in favor, raise your hand.
If, if, yes, if there's no agenda specific, not just to me.
Well, no, yeah, there'll be an agenda and it'll be more, you know, global kind of topics. You know, not day-to-day, week-to-week kind of stuff.
Darrell, you want to vote because it doesn't count.
That's correct, that's the idea that we had.
Right. So, and then the third one was the immediate need, phone calls, email actions, short notice meetings. So who will be on calls, emails, attending these meetings? Well, with mayor wires, so it's gonna, it's, so it's the mayor. And depending on the topic, either Jake or Heather, right?
Correct.
And if Darrell's not around, the deputy mayor.
Yes. And he put-
That's how I understand it.
Well, if there isn't email, sometimes maybe just a phone-
I don't know about, does this say authorized to make, by the village to make decisions? I'm not sure if those decisions would be unilateral. It could be, depending upon the topic. Unless they were not, then it would be obviously something that would have to be taken back for board action. But-
Yeah, it depends on the topic. If, if the decision involves spending money, no, you shouldn't-
Right.
The mayor unilaterally, or Jake or Heather shouldn't unilaterally decide that. But if it's something that doesn't involve spending money.
Right.
You know, the mayor doesn't have to take everything back to the board. It doesn't, not every direct decision requires board approval. But it depends on, it's hard to say, you know, it depends on what kind of decision they're looking for.
Like Darrell's in Florida, I think Tom brought this up as an example. And there's something we have to sign, get something in, an application, grant, whatever it is, and we can't wait till he gets back. Those decisions have to be made and we can't just leave it in email and then we lose out on it. So that's what he was talking about, is those critical things that come up. We have to be able to move on them and make some decisions.
Yeah, so the deputy mayor can sign that.
Correct.
I assume that, you know, your example, you know, Matt Chatfield would have brought the grant to the board earlier. It's not like this is the grant, it's coming out of the blue and-
May not be the best example, but assume something where it needs more critical timing.
I think, I think sometimes the supervisor is too used to running his own, you know, mortgage brokerage business. And government just doesn't work like this.
Exactly.
There are not a whole lot of things that mayors or town supervisors can just unilaterally decide. It just doesn't work that way. And sometimes I think he struggles with that.
It's just the way it is.
It's why things move slower with government because you gotta-
And usually attorneys.
Yeah, you can blame the attorneys too. But, so, so Darrell, who's, who, will you respond? Do a reply email to the supervisor?
Or would you like me to do a letter from the clerk from the office?
That's fine, I don't have a problem doing that. I would respond to all three of these. The monthly meeting, obviously not ideally set up here for January, but February. And the quarterly meetings, we can set up for March, June. We set them up quarterly. It's agreeable, everybody, I don't know.
No, everybody's like, they're-
Try, like a trimester?
We already voted.
Well, why don't you suggest, if you want March, suggest like the end of each quarter? You know, so March, June, what's the end of the next one, August? Whatever, whatever the, whatever the month of the end of each quarter is.
Okay. Right. Sure, I'll send an email, I'll do these.
Okay.
Can you see the board in there? That way we know.
I would do so, I would do so.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, so anyone, any more questions on that topic, or are we good?
I think you're good.
All right. So next, I am A with town regarding the BOA. Huh? MOU, sorry, I'm reading off the, I am A written on my-
When was that?
Well, it's-
It's not a contract.
It's not a, it's just a memorandum of understanding. And so I sent it to Heather and-
Which means it's-
Matt, Matt drafted this, I will not take credit for it. So-
Or responsibility.
Or responsibility. So, but I sent it to Charlie Genesi, he's okay with it. And I guess the town is going to take it up at their next meeting.
Thursday.
Just Thursday.
Oh, I thought you were, I thought it didn't look like your format.
It actually was a town, Don's one that Charlie made. The MOU was-
Yeah, we took the one, yeah, it basically took the one from, so you can see at the end of it, it's a non-binding statement of the party's mutual intentions. Basically, the town and village agree that you're gonna play well together in doing whatever needs to be done for the Brownfield Opportunity Area Nomination Study.
Play nice.
Good faith effort to work together.
Yes. And they're targeting the West Webster intersection there, meeting for Brownfield?
No, that's a-
No, that's a different-
West Webster's a separate project.
That's all, that would be different.
Yeah, it's not part of this. Okay. That's a restoring your footprint?
That's, there's that-
This is part of the grant, right?
There's that, but there's something, there's multiple things going on there as well as there's multiple things going on in this general area of the village as well.
Yeah.
This is, mostly this, the north, the north end, so I think north of 104, including parts of Xerox. Phillips Road-
Look, this is what I understood.
Phillips Road, north to Clem. And then Chioda Drive, Panama, Orchard Street, Commercial-
Commercial.
Donovan, North Avenue. And it's actually a little bit bigger than that now, that's, that was the original.
Do we go down this next meeting? Go down?
Yeah, so you need me to sign this, or is Darrell, Darrell's gonna sign?
Well, we, I guess the board, we can approve it tonight if you want.
Well, we gotta take a tour. I don't have a concern, it's a pretty hard case.
And authorize deputy, it's probably typed in there with Darrell's.
It is, I can sure of it all.
But you can cross that out.
I think you gave me the word that you wanted.
Yeah. Well, but you got Jerry here now.
Why don't you do it now?
It's up to you, or I could probably cross it out initially. If Don's okay with that.
Well, I have to memorize it though.
Yeah, someone's got to know as well, Heather can do this, she's a chief.
Firstly, I have no problem on this. Because when further in there, I'd have said that does not, does not constitute a binding. So, whatever that's in there, I agree, that's no problem. Jerry, if you want to sign it, you go right ahead.
All right.
Or you can wait till you get up.
You prefer the skip going? And you care when he gets up?
Yeah, we're here with mine tomorrow. Let's get it moving.
I don't see any need to. I'll just sign.
That's fine. Should we make a motion? Yes.
All right, so-
Yeah, a motion to, you know, accept the memorandum of understanding and authorize the deputy mayor to sign it on behalf of the village of Webster.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, good.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Trustee Malver?
Aye.
Trustee Valkyrie?
Aye.
Trustee Abilene?
Aye.
So after Jerry signs it, you notarize it, forward it to the supervisor.
Okay. You're gonna cross it out?
Who's got the neater handwriting?
He's terrible at handwriting.
He's so being, so being blind.
And, as I understand it, you're not absolutely sure that the Department of State even needs this, right?
Correct. Not absolutely sure.
But it can't hurt things.
It will not hurt anything. Correct.
Exactly.
All right, as far as a sign of good faith to actually work together on something, this is the easiest baby step you could take. All right, so next on the agenda is a joint comprehensive plan discussion. Right?
Yep.
I saw Don hesitate for a second.
No, I was just reading.
So I think this stemmed from talking about having a plan between, that we share or we do our own thing. So I don't know where everyone's leaning on that.
I think working together with the town is a smart move, but I want us to have our own comprehensive plan. But I think working together- Yeah, that's a liaison, yeah. But I think that's more, that is very, very important. Because we need to understand where they're coming from, they need to understand what we need. And then I want us to keep our village, I want us to have our own way back. I mean, I went back and looked at some from 2001 and way back. And I really think that that's important because we do that, I think.
I agree, given our own identity and-
Well, we're gonna lose it if we, if we're trying to do it hard.
I agree with Judy. The town comprehensive plan has a whole different variety of-
But they have different needs in the morning.
Different, got needs.
They get fifty-five thousand, then we have fifty-five hundred.
Financials.
Yeah.
We'll have to see if their comprehensive plan even includes a village.
Well, one is, I think, and I'm open to whatever, I'm just saying, one, we have just, I think we gotta get past saying that stuff. Two, like they're trying, you know, also, we, because this stuff, this thing I just signed and everything else that we do, you know?
I know.
We just have to, at some point, get past it and try to continue to work together.
Then they can show me, if they can show me, I'll agree.
Right, so hopefully making these efforts with these quarterly meetings and stuff like that is that we can have-
Very, very important.
Conversations about these things, right?
Yeah, I'd like to see how the village is gonna fit to their comprehensive plan or-
Well, it won't fit.
It won't fit.
There'll be, there'll be a blank hole. Right. Does that make a lot of sense? From a planning point of view?
No.
So the village, you know, can have a, you know, I think the concept might be, the village can have its own separate comprehensive plan and the town would have a comprehensive plan. Does it make any sense to use the same entity or organization, you know, to do both comprehensive plans?
Yeah.
To do public outreach at the same time?
Yep.
Yeah.
Consider the overlaps?
Because there are, you know, where the, where the town touches the village, it'd be nice to have, you know, some continuity of planning.
What best?
Like, you know, the village, you know, it's not as important what happens out in West Webster, but, you know, what happens, what happens with Xerox is a whole and-
I think it's in our best interest for everybody to know.
Darrell, just-
I think that if we're talking about having the same, first, organization of, remember this is the work on the village plan and the town plan, it seems then that they would have a good understanding of merging in terms of what are we looking for surrounding the village? How the village touches the town? And what are we looking for in terms of the comprehensive plan regarding that? I don't see getting involved necessarily in comprehensive plan on West Webster. I don't know if that really affects the village. And I don't know if the town would look significantly at comprehensive plan formulation for Main Street. But in terms of those areas that we touch and have commonality to, and, you know, I think that that is important in terms of our being together, on ideas regarding that.
Yeah, and I think-
Having one heard, having one entity, work on village and town would give them more of an understanding of how to blend the two together.
I agree, and it's not just touching either, you know, something in West Webster could happen that could have an impact. Where people don't wanna be in Webster anymore and it would have an impact.
That's true, that's true too.
What we do, so, so it's, it does have an impact. I think it's just what you're saying, but we, just to make sure someone is making sure they're both aligned on a long-term plan. That's it. Not one taking over the other, but just make sure they're all-
Understanding what each needs, what are the requirements, you know, what can we do better for each other? I just, I can't, I lived in West Webster and I know how much the town did not do for that hamlet. So I can't, I don't even wanna go there.
No, we don't wanna go there, we're talking about what-
No, I think, I think that the most important thing is that we have liaison with the town on the comprehensive plan. Because if something comes up that we may need to put the brakes on, that's what we gotta do. You know, it's just like, it doesn't apply to us, or, you know, it's just, it's just more important that somebody's there or some bodies are there to-
And understand.
To speak, to speak for the village. And, you know.
Jake, you-
Does anybody know whether the town has engaged or hired a consultant for?
The town was just awarded state funding to spread its comprehensive plan process. There's gonna be a portion of the funds for it. They're, they're definitely writing the RFP right now. So go solicit proposals from consultants. They're actively moving forward. Is it, is it too late for, is it too late for this effort to work together? No.
Would the village be able to apply for a grant for its part, its comprehensive plan?
Exactly.
Not in a timely fashion.
Because I think, you know, the town's having a, you know, an ad hoc citizens committee to help with the comprehensive plans. And just thinking off the top of my head, I think the village should also have a citizens group. And the two groups, the two groups should, when it gets to talking about areas, you know, village, indoor areas close to the village, those two groups should meet together. And so it's more than having a liaison, I think it's, you know, um-
But there needs to be some young people.
Yeah, the, the citizens groups don't always have to meet at the same time. And I think a lot of the times they would. What do you think, Neil?
I mean, I think the public engagement component is really important. And most of the people that would live in, that live in the village of Webster don't stop thinking that they live in Webster when they jump on Route 104. They still think that they live in Webster, it's still their town.
Yep.
And most of the people probably live in the town, maybe they don't consider much about the village, but they all still want strong village, so. Well, it's not a hundred percent true. I think that the us versus them needs to end.
You probably took a poll like at the Jazz Fest versus town residents and village residents. The big majority would be town residents.
Yes, absolutely.
Just population-wise, just cheering up.
We were kind of discussing some of that at the big meeting.
So the town, town residents do have, they all invested interest in the village business district.
I think the village is, I'd be right to say, hey, you know, we're interested in participating, but we just wanna understand how this process would proceed, how would the document be structured?
Exactly.
Right, we want our own dedicated chapter, two chapters dedicated to us based on X, Y, and Z, whatever you guys want it. Right? But all the demographics, they're all, all that data should be collected at the same time. Village, town, someone's gonna collect that demographic data. Why, why, why have one consultant do it and another one do it? Doesn't make any sense, it's just one example.
The only thing I add is, on Don's point about the cost, you know, historically we've done this with the citizens committee and there's been effectively no cost to the village.
Exactly.
If the village is, is part of a consultant, or using a consultant, will the village's portion of that be, you know, is it based on, you know, one night with the population or one side, whatever, you know, or portion of it? I think the numbers, I don't know if you recall estimates about what the consultant services would cost or?
Somewhere between a hundred and a hundred and fifty thousand. However, the village has, has yet to ask for any sort of monetary contribution from the town for the BOA planning effort. So I think there's give and take.
I think you end up with a much better end result if you engage a consultant. Frankly, I'm surprised that the village has never used a consultant to come up with its master, its comprehensive plans before. That surprises me. Did I, did Peter Eller just put it together in his demo, you know, for a couple of weeks? Well, that's why it looks like, it looks like you actually hired somebody to do it. So I don't know if you're entirely accurate, Jake, but-
No.
There must have been some cost to it.
Yes.
So, you know, unwillingly, but I was on.
And you did it for nothing?
Perfect, there we go.
Not doing it again. Yeah, I, I should have said, yeah, I can't believe somebody would volunteer to do something like that.
I think the goodness of his heart.
So what are the next questions?
So someone needs to contact the town and find out where they're at. Like if they're in the process of doing an RFP, their RFP should be modified to include a separate component for the village and what would that cost be? You know, and then, you know, they could break it up, just as it is without the village and then do it with the village, see what the cost difference is. And then you guys decide whether you wanna chip in or not.
And just analyze it two different ways, percentage of population, percentage of land area.
Well, see-
Either way, you'll-
Population, yeah.
Well, yeah, if you're emailing him back on those other items and maybe just propose that question where they are in this, this game and see if we can get it proposed two different ways.
You're wanting to look at it and the consultant as being one that looks at the joint as well as the village?
Doing it separate and together, right?
Let me say, if he's looking at it the town, I suppose sort of separate, that's how they would begin looking at the joint between us, the overlap and then ours, is that what you're looking at?
Yeah, and I mean, so we get final cost of this.
Yeah, I, I-
Before we jump in on-
Yeah, I think as Matt said, I would envision it that the plan would have separate and distinct sections just for the village. You know, because a comprehensive plan, there's also legal, legal aspect to a comprehensive plan. You know, your zoning decisions, planning decision, or they all have to be based on the comprehensive plan. So if you come out of left field and they're totally against the comprehensive plan, that's generally a good argument that people use that are opposed to a certain kind of development or something. So, so I guess my point is, there, there needs to be a separate village section of it. You know, it can't just be kind of jumbled all together. Agree? So if there's a separate village section, I don't know if you need to break it down by population or geography. It's just what's the cost? It's just what's the cost to, you know, to do the village? It's a 5,500 people. However, square miles it is, and they, they must be able to tell you. You know, they've done comprehensive plans before for similar size municipalities, and what it's gonna cost.
Yeah.
Looks like it.
Okay.
I'm just letting the town know our interest in using the same.
945, one night, population, I don't know about the size.
Yeah, you don't need to know all those details for this, first of all. And then, Heather, Heather wanted you to let them know that we would be interested in the, all consultant firm, you know, sharing it, and not having two different ones.
Is that Heather?
That was Heather, yes.
Okay, well, about all two comprehensive plan?
I'm sure they do now. I think so.
Wanted to try it out?
There's a bunch of quality firms out there. Maybe we should aim around consultant.
Uh, F, Matt, do we know who the consultant is that they're looking at for the town?
No, they haven't even sent out an RFP yet.
They haven't sent it out yet.
An RFP.
Oh, fell off his chair.
They won't know until they choose somebody from the RFP.
But you would, you would, you would think that if you use the same consultant for both the town and the village, that the cost would be less than two separate consultants.
It's a one.
Yes.
Less for both the town and the village.
Yeah.
You know, because there is, it can be some duplications of efforts and stuff like that.
The RFP be drafted where there includes as a, as a line item, I guess, as a, actually, a separate village comprehensive plan completed in conjunction with the town plan. I mean, it's not much different, we do Monterey County wide hazard mitigation plan, and we all work together, we supply our own little parts to it. Um, but it gets pulled it up into one plan. And so, from that aspect, it's not much different, it's the same consultant, but it's.
No, that's what I, that's how.
Really, it's driven by, driven by the county. It's not, and it's, here's the format, here's this, here's this, there's not much say. It's, you've got to compile with all these things, but it's something that goes on in the state. Um, would it be, if an RFP was written like that, saying, hey, it's optional, and they've kind of bid for us almost? Then we know it could be an optional.
Yeah, it, it would be like a joint plan, but with two separate components to it. Town and village.
They're running their own little book.
You'd have to have distinct village part of the comprehensive plan just for zoning and planning or kind of purposes. It can't just all meld together. So I think you're right, Jake, that's how I, I think it would come out.
And it's distinct, there's two, when we first started discussing, I looked up, there's all the villages in Monterey County, there's two, I think Churchville and Wheat, or Scottsville. That did joint plans, you know, Churchville and Braga, and Scottsville and Wheatland did joint plans. All the rest of the villages do independent, have their independent plans. Um, those areas are decidedly, decidedly more rural and, and far less populated than an area around here. So I think, to me, I think, so, you know, if you can streamline the effort and save costs in that way, but still maintain your own individual plan, it seems to be consistent with the like populated areas, developed areas on the northern and eastern side of the county, that's, you know, the everybody's on it.
Could there still be some potential funding if technically it looks like it's one, but even though it's separate?
Sounds.
Funding?
A new grant application could be sought in July, and the award wouldn't happen until December, so.
Okay.
I'm not sure the town, if the village was interested in doing that, they should have written a grant application in July.
I don't.
Well, this conversation's been really.
Conversation's not new.
Yeah. It's been in the emails and stuff.
Hey, well, what? How did our last comprehensive plan, uh, uh, weigh out? Do everything in the plan, or go by the plan, or?
Previous mayor ignored it.
All right, so. Do you have a copy of that? Moving on, Daryl's gonna take that, actually, I don't, he even knows. Um, the town supervisor, and then we'll, we'll vote for that.
Well, they know that we are in favor of joint work together on the town plan.
Yes, sir.
And, you really owe them that?
Sounds good.
Could include that, that's the, that's the, that's the separate distinct plans?
They don't have a say in it.
I like the idea that, I like the idea of having separate, uh,
Yes.
sections of the overall Webster County area plan, uh, specific to the village.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yep.
So it could be one book, if you want to say, but different chapters.
Correct.
Right.
Would be separate, the, the, what's happened in the village itself, what happened to joint lands surrounding the village in terms of what touches the village and town, and then the town. But it's all in one, one call, yeah, book, together, separate chapters. All like that.
All right. So, next, that's for a motion to approve the claims and warrants.
I signed, I don't know, I write that motion. I don't have any problem with it.
One second.
Propositions.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Buckaine?
Aye.
Trustee Nancy?
Aye.
Trustee Alito?
Aye. So, hopefully, a discussion. Yeah.
Um.
Doesn't say.
Well, yeah, it's not an executive session, but it is a discussion, this subject to attorney-client privilege, um, with myself and, and the trustees concerning the extension of an active formal use application pending before the town of Webster zoning board. So, either we can go to another room, or.
Yeah.
There's no seats in the other room.
Yeah. Thanks, Rick.
Are you making that a formal request?
I am making a formal request.
Just want to know if you will give us comments down in the comments.
All right, does anyone have anything else this evening?
No.
No, all right, so next meeting is the village board meeting of January 26th.
Yep.
Even though it does say 2022, I'm gonna suggest. It's 2023.
Yeah, we got it.
All right.
Yes, thank you, sir.
And, um, go Bengals.
Go.
Go.
May have to go.
Go Bills.
Go Bills.
You're not even a resident of Rochester anymore.
You're a Miami fan, you're a Miami fan now.
Yeah.
Hey, I'm going to take game last night.
Great game?
Oh, that's a good game.
Last night.
Not last night.
Yeah, for, for Dak and Dallas.
I was Tampa Bay though.
For Heather, it was a good game.
It was, I don't like Dallas, but I dislike Tom Brady and Maury.
Woo!
The game was over at halftime.
Yeah.
Want to do a motion?
So, they'll lay that next week, don't worry.
So, but, look at it this way.
Yes, good, good scene, sir.
The Jets' next quarterback could be Tom Brady.
No.
I can only.
No, they're not that, they are a dumb organization, but not that dumb. It's gonna be Derek Carr.
Does he have time to get divorced?
Brady's gonna go one time. Going with Tom Brady.
No, they want Lamar or Derek Carr, so.
We need to do a motion.
No, we didn't do a motion, hopefully, we did.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's a workshop.
We can do a.
We don't for the workshops.
You don't certainly need to take a motion.
Okay. The meeting is, uh.
Cease. Bye, Daryl.
Our friendly neighbor was, was wondering.
Daryl, down.